1:01.
Okay. I will now call this meeting of the Library Trustees of Fairfax County Public Library to order. And I will read the electronic script. Electronic meeting. Okay, here we go. To conduct this meeting wholly electronically and to effectuate both the emergency procedures authorized by FOIA and the emergency ordinance, this Library Board of Trustees needs to make certain findings and determinations for the record. First, because each member of this Library Board of Trustees is participating in this meeting from a separate location, we must verify that a quorum of members is participating and that each member's voice is clear, audible, and at an appropriate volume for all other members. Accordingly, I'm going to conduct a roll call and ask each Library Board member participating in this meeting to state your name and their location from which you are participating. I ask that each of you pay close attention to assure that you can, to ensure that you can hear each of your colleagues. Following this roll call, we will vote to establish that every member can hear every other member. So, Brian Engler.
Brian Engler, Braddock District at my home in Burke, Virginia.
Hey, Sue Park. Sue, could you unmute yourself?
Yeah.
I'm having...
Oh, there you go.
Nope, lost you.
You're still mute, now you're unmuted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, this is Sue Park, representing the Providence District, and I am calling in from my office. I'm sorry, I'm having a little bit of issue with my Zoom right now, sorry.
Okay, but we heard you loud and clear, so that's great. Jameis Gavage.
Hi, Jameis Gavage, at-large trustee, calling in from my home in Vienna.
Thank you, Suzanne Levy.
I'm Suzanne Levy, representing the city of Fairfax, and I'm calling in from my home in Fairfax City.
Thank you, Sue Jothah Hampton.
Hi, Sue Jothah Hampton, I'm calling in from my home in Great Falls, Virginia.
Okay, thank you, Sheila Janica.
Sheila Janica, Hunter Mill District, calling in from my home in Reston.
Thank you, Keith Fox.
Yes, this is Keith Fox, representing Lee District, calling in from my home in Springfield.
And Fran Milhouser from Mason District from my basement. Gary Russell.
Gary Russell, from my home in Mount Vernon.
Thank you. Priscilla Dando.
Priscilla Dando, calling from the Instructional Services Department in Fairfax, representing Fairfax County Public Schools.
Liz Walker.
Hi, everybody, Liz Walker, representing Sully District, calling from my home in Centerville.
Thank you, Phil Rosenthal.
Phil Rosenthal, Springfield District, calling from my home in Fairfax Station.
Thank you. At this point, I will pass the virtual gavel to Brian Engler, the vice chair, so that I may be heard to make the requisite motion. I move that each member's voice may be adequately heard by each member of this Library Board of Trustees.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Second, after having established that each member's voice may be heard by every other member, we must next establish the nature of the emergency that compels these emergency procedures, the fact that we are meeting electronically, what type of electronic communication is being used, and how we have arranged for public access to this meeting. Therefore, I move that the state of emergency caused by the COVID-19 pandemic makes it unsafe for this board to physically assemble and unsafe for the public to physically attend any such meeting, and that as such, FOIA's usual procedures, which require the physical assembly of this board and the physical presence of the public, cannot be implemented safely or practically. I further move that this board may conduct this meeting electronically through a dedicated Zoom meeting and that the public may access this meeting by the Zoom address that's provided on our website.
Second.
It is so moved. Finally, it is next required that all of the matters addressed on today's agenda must address the emergency itself, are necessary for continuity in Fairfax County Government, and/or are statutorily required or necessary to continue operations and the discharge of this board's lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. It is so moved. Okay. I don't believe we have any speakers, is that correct? Okay. The Library Board wishes to provide an opportunity for the public to comment on library-related issues. It is our policy to hear a maximum of 10 speakers at each regularly scheduled board meeting. Speakers are limited to one public comment during a six-month period. Each speaker has a maximum of three minutes for their comments. A 30-second warning will be given before each speaker's time is up, and the speaker will be expected to end promptly when time is called. Speakers are requested to preregister with the library director. However, if there are available public comment slots open at the time of a board meeting, the remaining slots may be filled by individuals registering at the meeting. Board members will listen but not question or respond to speakers, and tonight there are no registered speakers. However, if anyone wishes to speak at a future meeting, please call the director's assistant at 703-324-8324. The trustees appreciate the effort involved in public speaking and welcome public comments, thank you. And now, we move on to the minutes. The minutes have been sent to everyone, it will not be read at the meeting, so...
I move they be approved.
Phil, is there a second? Two people seconded, but they were muted, I could read their lips, but someone...
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, saying aye.
Aye.
No, opposed, okay, great. Next, we move to the Chair Report. I just have a few things. So, the Staff Excellence Awards are coming up. Next month, we will be awarding the Staff Excellence Awards, in which we recognize library staff nominated for outstanding service. And I was at a presentation on the history of Belvoir, and I learned that the slogan, it's not a slogan exactly, but on the county crest, the F-A-R-E-F-A-C, Fairfax, actually means speak it, do it. Speak do it. Which I thought was pretty cool. And I think that's a good thing to remember when we're talking about, we talk about customer service and we mean it, we do it, and we reward it. And then, this reward also fulfills a Martin Luther King definition of greatness, which is doing something that makes someone else's life better. So, I think we have a lot to look forward to. Well, we know we do, because we've had these before, and they're just very inspiring, you know, to have staff at our meeting and to read the nominations, it's really amazing. So, Sheila and I are constituting the committee this year, and we will be meeting to go through the nominations and make the decisions. The nomination period is from Valentine's Day for two weeks, and then in March, we'll get together and take care of making that. And then at the meeting, we'll be making the awards. I wanted to just talk a little bit about book challenges. I was at the Midwinter, which is Live Learn X, I guess that's how you say it, I'm not sure. But anyway, it used to be Midwinter, but it's now. And it was really good, it was, I think it was, it was better this year than last year. It seemed that way, it seemed more organized and mood pacing was good. And the outgoing ALA president made an announcement, and during her remarks, she said that at this time, this year, there have been three times as many challenges to books as in the same period last year, including 330 reports of book challenges last fall, which is really startling, and I think all of us are aware of that, because it's in the news, especially in regards to the schools. But I think, you know, we also are, can be a target of that. And we're gonna have a presentation at our next month meeting on collection and development and this topic, but I wanted to give you a little heads up this month, because it's been in the news almost every day. In fact, today, there was a really big editorial in the New York Times about it. So that you will know how Fairfax County Public Library responds to challenges to material. So, the first thing is that you can do is take a look at Policy S, which you will find on the FCPL trustee website. And that is the policy that we operate under, and that's in our, in the bylaws and the policies. So, be sure to take a look at that. And then, in the FCPL curated content on the website, you can click on My Library Account and the reconsideration process, which also describes what is the process that the library goes through when they receive a challenge to a book. And if it gets beyond sort of like person-to-person, when a person comes up to the, one of the library staff and complains about a book, and, you know, you, as a former staff member, you hope that you'll be able to have a conversation and satisfy the person's question about why a certain book is in the collection and sort of ease their fears or anger or whatever. But if not, there is a procedure in place. There is a committee appointed, headed by the head of collection development. And having served on one of those committees for a challenge myself, it's taken very seriously, and, you know, each person reads the book and then discusses it, and also read other professional reviews and professional articles about it, and then make a decision, and then that decision is communicated to the person with also the knowledge that the person, if they're not satisfied with that, that they can appeal it to the library director and to the library board. So, that's sort of the nutshell, so that if, if, you know, and just in a conversation, you know, you'll be able to say, yeah, there's a, there's a policy in place, there's a procedure that's been in place for many years. And I saw that Sheila was shaking her head, she's, that she'd also been on a committee. And it's a really, really interesting process, because sometimes you read a book, you're like, oh my gosh, I never would read this book. And I would never check it out, but it's gotta be here, you know, it doesn't matter. So, that's that, and then, so you can look forward to a more in-depth information at our March meeting. And then, also in March, the County Board will be issuing the proclamation recognizing Library Week, which will be April 3rd through the 9th. And I believe that's, is that tentatively, or it is set for the March 22nd board meeting?
It's still tentative.
Okay, okay, but we'll find out more, and those of us who are here and can are encouraged to come to the meeting, because it's, it's nice, it's a good, it's a cool thing. Okay, so that's all I have, and...
Fran?
Yes.
A couple of questions, you said it was Policy S, like in Sam, or F, Frank, S?
S, as in Susan.
Susan, okay.
And I have, I have just a request for Jessica. Jessica, you mentioned, I think last time, that when I requested if we could have a write-up about the Staff Excellence Awards, have you sent that out, and I just missed it?
No, I have not sent that out.
Is that still coming? Okay. My supervisor's newsletter goes out on Friday, so if I could possibly have it by Thursday, that would help. Thanks.
Phil. You're muted, Phil. Phil, you are muted.
I unmute, then you mute me, or somebody does. As a result of some of the conflict, you know, in the protests and things, have we had anybody ask us to review any of these books?
I'd be happy to respond to that, Fran, if you'd like.
Yep.
Yeah, so you will all be getting a more comprehensive review of this as a presentation at your March meeting, but we have not received any large-scale challenges to public library collections since the events that you're referencing.
Jessica, on the committee that looks at the books when it is necessary, is a library board member on that committee, or is that strictly staff?
Staff.
Within the... It is a staff committee. So, the reconsideration process always starts with a conversation between the person who has questions or concerns about an item and a staff member at their local branch, typically the branch manager. If it escalates from there, a committee is comprised of professional staff within the system who are reflective of the, like, classification of books. So, if it's a youth book, it's Youth Services Staff, if it's an adult book, it's Youth Services Staff, as well as Collection Coordinating Staff. If the response is not sufficient to satisfy the inquirer's interest in having it reconsidered, it can be appealed to myself, and then I review the same things. If they remain unhappy with that response, it comes to the Library Board, and then you all have a chance, not as a committee, but as a whole.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any? Okay, great, now we'll move on to committee reports, and I think the person is Jane for outreach.
Yeah, hi. We had to bump our December meeting, but we met in January, and we had a good conversation about how we, as trustees, can better get the word out about the library, taking advantage of the beautiful annual report. So, we created some work for Fran to send out more annual reports. It was a really nice, nice meeting. Do you not remember some?
For me, or for Jessica to do that?
Well, Jessica's the power.
Jessica is... Jessica is drafting a cover letter for you, Fran, to go along with the documents that would go to...
I knew there was something, and I couldn't find, and I could, thank you. Okay, I knew there was something I was supposed to do, but, okay, great, I'm okay.
Now you are.
And then, another thing is, we have, Erin's, Erin gives us annual, not annual, quarterly talking points. And Erin, if you're on the call, would you be able just to send those updated talking points to all board members? This is a good way, Sue, what we do usually with the talking points is we send them on to the person at our supervisor's office who does their newsletter. So, it's just a really handy way for them to get the good news out about the libraries.
I am here, I certainly, we can certainly resend. We had to update the most recent batch because of the updated schedule, which we do need help getting the word out about the schedule modification. So, we can reshare that, and just if you have to pick one thing to share, definitely share that right now.
I do.
Oh, okay, thanks for helping us prioritize that, Erin. So, everyone, as soon as you get these talking points from Erin, please reach out to your supervisor's office with the news about the modified hours. And then, our last, our next meeting is being scheduled for the last week in March. So, you should see an email from Jessica asking for your time preferences. Any questions about the outreach committee? All right.
Okay, thank you, next is the schools, Priscilla, thank you for that beautiful report.
Hi, everyone, I am super excited to share some of the great things that are going on in FCPS, as well as in our library programs. And I'm gonna try not to just overwhelm you with too much, but I do have a lot that I'd like to share, honestly. What I don't know, because it's my fault I was late in bringing it out, is if people have access to the one-pager that I created. So, I can either share my screen, or if you had it emailed to you earlier, you can access that, or you can just listen, because it's really just the foundation for my talking points. So, look, Sue Jothah even printed it out, that's amazing. So, if you haven't seen it in your email, apparently it will be there.
How did it get to us?
Yeah, we just got it, so if you want to share your screen, that would probably be just nothing.
Happy to share my screen. Okay, so, the first thing I wanted to share is just a little bit of some tidbits around Fairfax County Public Schools. So, we're looking at the gray bar on the left-hand side here. I'm not sure how well-known our situation was as we returned from winter break. We had quite a need for substitutes with staff being out, mainly due to either quarantine or isolation, or for personal reasons, or for, you know, just the regular reasons why you might not be available. And our substitute pool is fairly shallow right now in the county, so if you're looking for something to do and would like to take that on, I highly recommend it, because I was working as a substitute for two weeks at Mount Vernon High School. So, shout out to Gary. It was part of our hands, all-hands-on-deck approach. Everyone in Instructional Services was asked to put aside their regular work to work in schools, and I personally found it wonderful. You know, I was sharing with colleagues earlier, the best thing that happened was, previously, when I talk about students and I imagine students, and I'm thinking about what we're planning to support students, I tend to think about the students that I taught. And now, I have students who are currently in schools, I know their names, I see their faces, and I've had conversations with them, so that, that's been wonderful. We also have an initiative that has really floated to the top division-wide, and that is our Equitable Access to Literacy Plan. There's a link in the document that you can take a look at, and essentially, it is resetting our priority goals K-12. It's not just for the littles, but in the littles, we're focused more on a monological awareness approach of reading science. And with the older students, we're talking about disciplinary literacy. And I could talk to you about either one of those offline, if you would like additional information, there is a link there to our website that gives you a little bit of a hint as to what those things are about. So, let's just transition over to my favorite topic, the school library programs of Fairfax County. We did a refresh of our website, and so, our website now has, it always has had access to the catalog, and it has always had listings of our centrally purchased databases and ebook collections. So, those are still there, available. And we have really expanded the general information within About FCPS Library Programs, something specific to our resources and how we select our resources, and then a focus on our instructional program. And as I was thinking about putting this together, I thought, you know, as members of the board and you think about the public library that you all experience, and the information that we get, the presentations, and all the work that we do on this board with public libraries, I thought I might highlight some things that are just some differentiation factors or some nuances when we think about school libraries. And so, that's why I put the little introductory paragraph in About FCPS Libraries up there, so you can see the breadth of what we do. And if we had a little exercise to do a Venn diagram, you could pretty much pinpoint the places that I recognize that in the public library, too. But I wanted to go one layer deeper, just to give you some additional information. So, when we think about the school librarian roles, there are really five roles that school librarians practice each and every day, and these are the areas often that are the subject of my job of professional development and support. And when we think of the librarian as a teacher, of course, all of our librarians are certified teachers, and there is a library curriculum, and that curriculum is really focused on skills. And the beautiful part of the library and the librarian is teacher is that we are focused on having students grow in their skills, but they are the ownership of their learning, they have ownership of their learning, drive their learning. It's often tied to their interests, but we have a sandbox of a content area to work with, and all of our skills are content-neutral. So, it's super fun to be a school librarian, because every day is different, all the learning is different, and you get to see actual growth, because it's skills-based. When you think about information specialists, that's a lot more about the traditional aspects of you think of a librarian, you know, we know how to find information, we know how to use information, we can be consultants to teachers and to administrators when they need information, and there are standards to how you search, how you evaluate, et cetera. An instructional partner is an important role, because what we do is most effective when we are partnering with a classroom teacher and making connections and broadening connections and providing scaffolds and supports to what's happening in the classroom. So, we spend a lot of time working with classes, working with teachers, and looking at the content area curriculum to see where we can provide support. Librarians are natural leaders, and we're leaders in the sense that we can also pay very specific and close attention to the county initiatives and find innovative and creative ways to support that. And we also model excellent teaching and model ways of approaching students as individuals and helping them to create meaningful learning experiences for themselves. And lastly, program administrator has kind of two parts. We do programming for students, just like library programming. So, we have clubs that we sponsor, and, you know, that's where the Makerspace idea comes in. But really, program administrator is all the behind-the-scenes stuff that is invisible to everybody else, but is usually top of mind of the librarian that talks about the administration and management of the library program. And that includes the budget, selecting materials, and so forth. So, I promise I'm not going to go into such depth for the rest of this, but I really wanted to kind of give you a sketch of what the librarian is responsible for, because I don't think that's as well-known outside of the school system. I was inspired by Jessica's sharing around the different themes that FCPL is talking about regarding literacies. And I know that we were just in our traditional literacy focus, and so, I have listed here the literacies that are the bread and butter of our librarians, pretty much K-12. So, these are reflected in our curriculum. And then, lastly, I just wanted to share, we are killing it when it comes to the use of our resources. I think the drought that we had, I knew that was gonna happen, scary, Priscilla. I have to go in the hall to turn on the light, oh no, it came back, good. The, our engagement with our print and our online resources is really off the charts, and I think that's a result of, of course, the efforts of our librarians, but I think it's also a response to the lack of access to the school library and to our books and our librarians that has been disrupted on and off in the last couple of years. So, that was me talking quite a lot, and I could talk a lot more, but I would be interested if you had any questions for me.
Priscilla? I can't see the bottom of the page, and I did not get a copy.
Yeah, I got all talking, I got all talking.
There we go.
Thank you. Share, so please, feel free. And you can, I believe you'll have it in your email as well, if you want to look at it.
I emailed it out as you just started talking, Priscilla.
Great.
Yeah, I really like those, the literacy also. I like seeing that, because, you know, we're working on that, too, the different literacies, yeah.
Priscilla, I have a question for you regarding the EAL, the Equitable Access to Literacy. I'm on that steering committee as in my role with the NAACP. I'm sorry, someone's calling me in the middle of my meeting, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I apologize. And I wanted to know, because I haven't actually, no one has mentioned it in these meetings, I'm wondering, is there a specific carved-out role that has been assigned to our school libraries as they support this work?
Thank you, thank you for that question. So, there are organizational committees around different aspects of the plan, which is, as I'm sure you know, Sue Jothah, is still under construction. And so, we have kind of, from the central office standpoint, a behind-the-scenes impact to ensure that the resources are, people are aware of the resources that we have that can support the work, and then also crafting the supports, and also just discussing, like, how can we, and I say we, all of us in central office, support the schools? What is the best way to provide the information needed? And then also, to give the supports that are required. When it comes down to the nitty-gritty, for instance, of reading instruction, that's not, like, teaching students how to read is not a direct part of the librarian's role, but we obviously put a huge importance to literacy. And one of the things that I really appreciate in this time is as we're doing a lot of assessing of students and their reading, and as they're doing, you know, different programs online, and teachers are getting some direction in direct instruction in reading, our librarian's goal mainly is to support students as readers for the joy of reading, and to understand that no literacy program will be successful if students don't have ample access and choice for their own reading. And so, that is really the main part that I would say that the librarians play at the school level, but at the central level, we are part of the think tank, supporting the division.
That's good to know, thank you very much. I was just wondering, I know today they had a steering committee meeting, meet on Wednesday, the second Wednesday of the month. And they were talking about the training that's being put in place for staff and then central office leadership and school leadership. And it's really, and they've made this, I mean, they have done this work so quickly. So I was just wondering, when you bring this up, whether they have leaned into the opportunities available.
Yeah, I'll tell you, our coordinators meeting today, we got an update. So it's definitely, I think it's really the number one priority at the moment.
It's, it is, seems to be that way and it's really very exciting. Thank you for letting me know that. I appreciate it. I really like your saying that really librarian's role is to really reinforce it now that you can learn to read all the joy that is open to you, you know? That's great.
Anybody else? Okay, thanks so much, Priscilla.
Thank you.
And Brian, I think we have some exciting strategic plan.
I don't know how exciting it is. You can unshare your screen if you want, Priscilla. There you go. The strategic plan is something we have, of course. It was approved and started in 2018. In order to receive state funding, we have to review that every five years. So for fiscal year '23, which starts in one July, we have to have reviewed the previous strategic plan and updated it accordingly. And of course, there are reasons to update it. In general, we had our first meeting January 28th, where we all kind of met each other virtually and some of the staff, of course. And we, I think the feeling was that our current strategic plan is reasonably good. There's not a big change needed, but the county has updated their strategic plan or built a new strategic plan. They're working on it. And they, we have to crosswalk our plan with theirs. And of course, there are things, the issues of intellectual freedom, barriers to access and things like that, which have to be looked at and aren't explicitly in our plan. So we will have to be, there will have to be some adjustment made. So the, the plan is for the, the staff committee, which is fairly large. And we met Doug Miller, who has worked on the county strategic plan and I believe will be working, if not chairing, your committee, right, Jess? And he's, they'll, they'll look through all the information. We'll have our next meeting on March 28th. So at which time we'll look at what they've done and what they recommend and, and go forward from there. So I don't see any need to have a committee report in the March meeting because we won't have met again. We'll do it in April and we'll talk about what went on in the March meeting. And of course, if anybody at all who is on or off the committee looks at our old strategic plan and thinks there ought to be something added, please feel free to let me know and Jessica as well and we'll see. I think we have a group that's gonna look very, you know, very broadly at all this stuff. And we had some good discussions at our meeting. So, so I don't know how exciting it is, but there you go.
I thought it was. Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, great. Staff, excellent. I think I kind of covered that in the chairs report. Sheila, it's a two-person committee so that we are not obligated to have a public meeting because then people would know what we're saying about.
Yeah.
So that's why it's just two people. And, and I thought, so there we go, that's that. An ebook advocacy report from Gary on things that have been happening and where did Gary go? He's not on my screen anymore. There he is. Okay, so Gary, take it away. You're muted. Yeah, so unmute.
You're right, Phil. It automatically mutes you. But by the way, Fran, I wanted to mention, I'm sure that Liz was using Sam as short for Samantha.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
The ad hoc ebook advisory committee met from April through June of last year and recommended to the board to direct the library director to proceed with initiating a new county legislative item that would amend the Virginia code to, quote, "require all publishers who sell digital library materials to also sell those materials to libraries at reasonable terms of cost and access," unquote. And as you recall, the board approved that at our July meeting. The county's legislative review process, which ran from September into November, ultimately included the topic as part of the county's legislative program. However, the language indicated that the county board of supervisors would be supportive of new Virginia legislation, such as we proposed, but that the county would not itself institute a specific proposal. Part of the hesitancy to move forward a county-sponsored piece on the topic was due to the recently learned likelihood of litigation on the topic. As you probably recall, our proposal was based, like was almost identical to the bill that was passed by the Maryland Assembly last March. And that went into effect on January 1st. But in the meantime, on December 9th, the Association of American Publishers sought a preliminary injunction in the federal district court in Maryland to bar the Maryland state officials from enforcing the law. The publishers claim that the Maryland law is preempted by the Copyright Act. And the Maryland law represents an attempt to divert copyright policy from the federal government to the state legislatures. When it's, according to them and many people, unambiguous that Congress has the exclusive jurisdiction of the subject. So then on January the 14th, the Maryland attorneys filed a motion to dismiss that suit. Monday, just two days ago, the court, the federal district court in Maryland, held almost three hours of hearings on the case. The judge indicated that she understood the urgency of the matter and promised to deliver a speedy decision. I don't know what speedy means, but that's what we're waiting for. But from my reading of the report on the hearing, I'd say first, the good news is the judge got her law degree at UVA. And she appeared to be very sympathetic to what we're trying to do. However, I think the potentially bad news is that she really grilled the Maryland attorneys. And in doing so, she was, she expressed considerable concern about the statute language. And she was clearly skeptical about how the law would operate. As I say, we don't know when the decision will come down, but it should be fairly soon. Meanwhile, as you know, other states are at various stages of dealing with similar legislation. New York actually passed a bill, but the governor vetoed it in December. And in doing so, she cited this copyright preemption argument is the reason why she vetoed it. New York is trying to rewrite it, try to get around that and resubmit it. Other states that have bills at various stages of consideration are Rhode Island, Massachusetts and Illinois. But I guess the bottom line, my personal view is that we won't see any tangible results until this copyright issue is addressed some way. But the action at the state level definitely has forced, well, number one, it's brought the problem to the public's attention, which is very important. And secondly, it's, it's forced the issue to be dealt with. That's, that's my report.
Great summary. I had been sort of confused as to, especially what's going on in Richmond, but it makes sense to me now that, that as you, as you, I guess speculate, but I think you're probably right. Until that gets resolved, they won't do anything, probably. Yeah, that sounds, yeah. I think Phil has a question or comment.
Well, I was just gonna make a comment, you know, independent of being a trustee. I contacted this Senator Dave Marston and I got him information. And I asked him if he would consider introducing, you know, a bill similar to Maryland or some bill that would just, you know, keep this issue on the front burner. He told me he went to the Attorney General and I asked him, because I think of the lawsuits and things, if they did not want to do anything at this point. I also contacted, but I did not hear back from him, Delegate Mark Sickles, who has been favorable, you know, experiences with the library. And I sent him the information, you know, on the issue. And then I intended since nothing was gonna issue the follow-up with him and see what his thought was on it.
Thanks, Phil.
I had one thing sort of in response to that. If copyright is the issue, really, that means Congress may have to deal with it, you know, in order to, to reach a conclusion or end to help us. And if that's true, then all this stuff that's happening at the state level, the state legislators involved, but whatever, that's only gonna raise the issue and put pressure on members of Congress when they deal with it. Because the publishers, well, we can't always say this, but the publishers should have some of their attention for one reason or another. But grassroots attention is more powerful than special interest attention. So I hope that my conclusion does not leave the impression that, okay, we'll just sit around waiting until something happens. I think we still need to stay engaged and keep, keep the attention on our problem.
Liz?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I need to go back and refresh my memory in terms of the problem. I got, I thought I walked away that the problem was with Amazon not wanting to have, have ebooks in the libraries that they're responsible for because they don't get, we'll say, fees for reading the volume. But I didn't know that it was across the board a problem. I thought that we were able to get ebooks from other publishers that are in the library today. It was just that as the, Amazon has more contracts restricting that with the authors that are using, using Amazon to publish. That's where the problem was. It wasn't across the board. But now I'm getting the impression that it might be an industry-wide problem that I didn't pick up before.
Gary, would you like me to respond?
Yes, I would.
Sure. So.
To, I don't know.
Yeah, Diane and I are both on, so I'll start and then she is welcome to hop in with all the things I'm sure I'll miss. So Liz, you were absolutely correct that part of the problem is with corporations like Amazon, which do not sell to libraries. So if you think about like the Amazon Unlimited Collection, those are things that you can only as an individual consumer purchase through Amazon. They are not available for libraries to contract with. But there are additional issues that we as a, as an industry have bundled together that are problematic around e-materials. So in general, even companies that do sell and work with public and academic libraries do so with terms, conditions and costs that are not easy to work with on a public budget. So where you as a general consumer might be able to license the right to use an ebook from a vendor like Amazon or, or the publishing company for 20 or 30 bucks, like you would for a regular physical book. It will cost a library, if it's a new title and a popular one, eighty to a hundred dollars. So the cost is disparate. That in and of itself is not a deal breaker because we are using that item multiple times. However, in addition to the difference in cost, libraries are also given not a great deal on the terms and conditions. So we may be able to keep the item for a year or maybe able to circulate it 26 or 50 times. Or we may have it disappear after a certain block of time that we don't know about at this point in time. So there's a variety of aspects that all bundle into this. So it is, it is both companies that will not provide access period and companies that provide limited arbitrary cost and terms that do not do the taxpayer any justice. So that's kind of my.
Yeah, I said before that I never heard that the copywriting was an issue. There was the problem, the barrier. I was hearing it was more of a contract relationship between a publisher and the author. And now it seems like it's really.
Yeah, copyright remains a question mark as well. And part of that is because way back in the yonder days of the internet, e-materials are not classified as books. They are classified as software. So when you buy, air quote, an ebook, you are not buying an ebook. You are buying the right to use an ebook until such a time that you are no longer allowed to use that ebook. And the same holds true for libraries. That also means that these materials that you buy the right to use are not owned by you and you don't have the right to gift them like you would a physical book where there is a first use doctrine, which is guided by copyright. There's, there's lots of pieces that all mix it together. And they've created a really muddled picture. So Gary is absolutely right that all of the work that's happening at local and state levels, the end goal with this is to force the issue higher to the federal level. So they have to make a decision about this because every decision that's gonna happen at the local level, all the ones Gary mentioned, I heard yesterday that Tennessee is moving towards a similar bill to all the ones that are happening right now. All of these pieces are driving a wedge that's gonna force someone to pay attention to this and help create a more definitive outline of what is realistic in the future relationship between libraries and publishing companies in the digital atmosphere.
Sounds like it's definitely needed.
Liz, also, I think that they're using the argument that the copyright law gives the author power over their works. And therefore, they're, they're the ones that can decide what happens with their works. That's, that, I'm just saying, that's just one of the arguments being used by the publishers.
Yeah. It's a fascinating legal question, right? Because if you're saying that these e-materials are not books, that they are software, do they fall under copyright? And if you ask a publisher or an author, the answer is probably yes, because they want to make sure that people don't steal their stuff. But when you're trying to get the rights to use them, you're not given the same protections that copyright provides for physical materials. So it's really interesting to watch from like a 20,000-foot wall. Incredibly frustrating at an individual library level.
Right, I can see that.
Well, I, I wonder like the, you know, the publishers and if it's an issue of interpretation of if they own the copyright, well, then what gives, then what does that mean? That they have the power to do. But that's just a question that pops into my head, but this is really not for us to discuss this. It is thorny and complicated and I really appreciated that summary of where we are. You know, and I've been thinking about what, what trustees, what our role in terms of advocacy for legislation. And it's. And it's, I guess we're still at a wait-and-see kind of place, right? Gary disappeared.
What Gary said, what Gary said is actually something we really need to consider. We're not so much as a wait, at a wait-and-see, in so much as a lean-in. Like, don't stop leaning in on the subject, right? Because this is, it's clear, this is very fascinating, and like, I really appreciated that explanation and then the further information from Jessica, because it is a question of really trying to take advantage of the public trust, right? So like, we, libraries are, they exist for the community, for the society at large. They are a public benefit, right? And that is then antithetical to the making of money. Libraries do not generate money. Like, they're not a money generator. That's not the point, is not to generate money. So that is then going to be a question of who, like, you know, I'm an author, I own my own copyright, right? Like, authors, we own our copyrights. So it's a question beyond that. They're trying to make sure that you don't lose that income by having unlimited access to what is now the cutting-edge way that people are engaging with media. You know, like, you've seen astronomical increases in electronic subscription, in using and listening to books versus reading books, et cetera. You have to be on that edge, like. It is a public sector versus capitalism kind of a question, and this is really very interesting. So I heard from what Gary said that it's not even some, there is, of course, a wait-and-see aspect because they have been put in a holding pattern, but we, as trustees, probably our job is to lean in and to make sure that people understand, we don't, there's so much, we, we on this board are not understanding, but there's a lot to understand that if the public understood, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that if the public truly understood what is being done to them, like, it's not like Jessica said, it's not respectful of taxpayer dollars, like, we pay for the libraries, we're paying, you know. It is, it is something to lean in on, it seems to me.
Yeah, I haven't followed it closely at all because I'm not a musician, but it sounds to me, it's a little bit like what's been going through the music industry with the people who write songs and Spotify and all these other services and reusing the music, and they're not getting their, you know, the sense that they are supposed to. So it's, I don't know where that is in terms of resolution, but it sounds like it's almost similar kind of an issue.
Sheila had, Sheila had her hand up, so.
I would like, thank you very much, Gary, for that capsule, that, the description of where we are and what's going on. I, being on the committee, I've been wondering what on earth, you know, was this dead in the water? But what I picked up on what you said, I think I heard you right, that going back to the grassroots, I think that putting the pressure on, letting the public know what's going on, they're the ones who basically are going to suffer in the long run because they expect to be able to get eBooks. This is a tech, everybody I listen, I know listens to books on tape when they're taking walks, when they're cooking, when they're in the, you know. And they just expect the library to have them, and they don't understand, how could they? I mean, we're grappling with what's going on. We don't really, there are so many aspects of it, as you all have been saying. So I think that we need to keep our committee alive, keep ourselves up to date on what's going on and to keep the pressure on because we want the public to, to take that grassroots approach. I think that's really important, so.
The question I would have is that, should we ask the committee to help us with how to word support or to create awareness? Because I, I mean, I don't know how, I don't know how, what to say. I mean, does that make sense that the committee could come up with bullet points, maybe, or? What do you think?
It'd be almost like talking points that they could use to write their senators and congresspeople about the issue and how they feel it's important and how to get it resolved. I don't know.
And Fran, this is, this is in the county's legislative program at this point, that although they're not moving forward anything, that they support these types of initiatives. So you're totally in the clear to work on this.
So the committee member, committee, how do you feel about that?
Committee? I'm good for whatever the committee wants to do, and it looks like Phil's got his hand up, too.
Okay, well, I had a question. I was sort of asking Gary, and then I'll, we'll do Phil. Gary, do you want to say anything, or would you rather not?
No, I agree with Sheila. In fact, you might remember, she's a member of the committee that brought up grassroots right the very first meeting about that being the key to the whole thing.
Yeah. Yeah.
If I were like calling the shots, and I'm saying in Jessica's position, I would think, and Gary has a political background, he could comment, but if in every state legislature in the country, a bill was introduced addressing this issue, these publishers, you know, when the bill comes in, then they have to hire a lobbyist to that state to try to protect their interests, to make sure it doesn't pass. And at some point, I would think you would force them to sit down and possibly do something. So in lieu of like, like you say, we do have to move to a federal level, but hypothetically, if there was a bill introduced this year at every state legislature, I think the publishers would start to get a message that they have to do something, okay? And at the same time, if it was active in Virginia, then it would make it much easier for us to contact our senators and our federal senators and our federal congressmen as well.
Okay, so, go ahead, Gary. Looks like you were getting ready to say something.
Yeah, I was gonna say, my guess is, I might be wrong, but I think this judge's decision is going to make it a completely new ballgame.
Yeah.
But, I mean, the ALA, for example, they're going to respond. And which, which way they feel they need to go, I think will give us some direction. I mean, we might, we might jump to Congress right then.
Yeah, yeah. So for, as far as next steps, then, would be for the committee to meet again, and what do you think about the next steps in terms of?
But, can I say something?
Advocates. Oh, Brian, sure.
Yeah, just, I think that until we really know what's happening, it is kind of jumping the gun for them to meet and lay out words and things like that. I think they have to watch what's going on. Gary's doing an outstanding job of it, and the others. And then, then there may be reaction. I mean, the, the time it does go up to the federal level, if it, if it does, and they're working on the copyright law or rules or whatever it is, then we need to have things, you know, letters to write to congressmen and stuff. And perhaps the committee can come up with some words, and we could pass them to the foundation. You could give them to the friends groups and let people write or something like that. But I think it's a little premature unless Gary wants to have a meeting for them to do anything besides figure out what happens with this judge, with her opinion, and where it's going to go in this case.
Yeah, we sort of had the, is it watch and wait, or is it lean in? And maybe the committee could help us with that. So we'll leave it in your hands, Gary, and Sheila.
Hey, Fran, I have my hand raised, but it's kind of.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's cleverly built into the background back there.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I want to, I want to get Erin involved in some type of clever poster paper, something similar to what we've done with the removal of the fees, the late fees. And what I'm thinking is, I mean, we're trying to build up support for this at some point, right? It's lean in or not, but at some point, we need people outside of this system to care about it also. So I think, you know, a few digital posters, I'm going to call them because they can be tweeted, TikToked or whatever, something clever. And it's really educating the public on this issue. Because, I mean, I'm on other boards where we have issues, and the general public has no idea what it is. Even if we explain it one good time, they still are like, whatever. So I just want to kind of generate a buzz, and since it's already in the legislative, the county's legislative, I think probably we can do that, right?
Yeah, Erin, go ahead.
I like what you're thinking, and I just sent a link to Jessica because our branch out feature story for the winter issue is busting eBook myths. And it breaks down essentially a lot of this whole conversation, the background of it, not necessarily what's happening in each legislature in a really accessible way. And it has been very popular on social media, and we will continue to share it. Because, yeah, the first step is explaining the landscape to folks so that they can, they can understand when they see coverage of legislative items. So I like what you're thinking.
Excellent. Good. And I also am really interested in the idea of phoning, that when we have, once we have talking points, that as trustees, we can get, maybe get one or two or five or 10 of your friends, that people that you know really well, to make the phone calls. Because I know from experience that phoning the, a person's office, and just, actually from Jane, I know this, that they really, they track phone calls perhaps more than letters and emails. And having called committee, you know, members, offices of committee members when there was legislation that, you know, you get someone to talk to, they listen to you, they mark down, this person wants this to go forward, this person is against it, and that gets communicated to the member. So I think, you know, when, when we have, I think right now is, the question is like, what information do we have and what, what would we want to say? And we need to make sure that we're, that we come up with that. We're sort of waiting, if this copyright, you know, if that judgment passes, you know, in the favor of, it's a copyright issue, so it's not the other thing. Well, would that be appealed, and what would that mean? So it's complicated, and I think, like Erin, you know, we're, we're doing good brainstorming in terms of our approach, like educate, and then, you know, on the, on the basis, what is the issue? And then the step is like, where are we now? And then what would we do? So I think that's my, yeah, Gary, what do you think?
I mentioned one thing. Having been on the other side of this for 20 years or so, when you do contact Congress, you need an action item. If, if, if you're contacting them with a complaint, or you're contacting them with information, that's okay. But the more you do that without an action item, pretty soon your punch is gone. I don't, my advice is not to contact Congress until you, you have that action item. And secondly, I want, I don't know, maybe this isn't the forum to ask this question, but Jessica, but let me tell you, something happened about 40 years ago, and I was wondering if I could repeat it. I remember the first mass mailing campaign that I remembered at Congress, thousands of, was the area in Maryland across from Mount Vernon was going to be developed.
Yeah. Yeah.
And we got thousands of postcards. And most of them came because everyone who went to Mount Vernon to visit was given this postcard. And then they mailed them in. Now, communications have changed a little bit since then, but is, is there a way that something could be in the library, like these postcards, that people could pick up and either mail or use the internet to communicate? Is that legal?
So I'm, I'm going to ask for a deferral on that one because I want to double check. Because you all, as trustees, have, have the power to advocate around this. We as staff don't have quite the same opportunity level. And I want to make sure that I wouldn't be getting our staff into trouble if we made something available that made it look like staff were trying to politicize an issue instead of simply providing information, which is what our job is. I think the answer is probably no, but I will follow up because I want to be able to give you a more definitive response on that, that's based on, not just my gut check.
It's very similar to our, it's about time thing. And putting, putting their information in the library was acceptable, things like that. But, but putting something in there that was a postcard to send, I think, I really think it'd be no, but.
Well, that one was, that one was very clear because that one, we are an agency of the county, staff or county employees, we could not be asking the public to, on our behalf, circumvent the county's budget process. But this one, I'll double check just in case.
Yeah, I wonder if like, let me.
To do it, I'm just wondering if like the foundation could do it, or.
Or the friends.
Or if it were just like the, you know.
Right.
On the postcard, like, I support, this is something that I support. And, you know, but, but I, I, yeah, I'm.
I will be happy to follow up.
Let's see what it is. Okay, I think that Phil had his hand up. Phil, did you have your hand up?
I just wanted to say briefly, like splitting hairs where Jessica was, let's assume we had the message that Gary is referring to. There would be no reason that we as trustees could put a letter out and then instruct Jessica to put the letter in the library. It's coming from the trustees. And, you know, we sign off on the letter that simply, you know, whatever the, the action item that Gary is saying we need at that time, put this in the library and make sure people pick it up, you know, brief presentation of what the issue is and what we would like them to do. And it comes from the trustees rather from the staff, since she's saying we have the authority to do it.
Well, let's see what the county attorney has to say.
Yeah, I will, I will look into that aspect as well.
Yeah. Okay, so I think we've had a.
Thank you.
Everyone's had a lot of opportunity to speak. Is there anyone else who has not had a chance who would like to say something or ask a question? And so is my understanding correct that we're leaving in the capable hands of the committee to recommend next steps? Is that, does that, you think that, does that sound right for you, committee members? Yeah.
And monitoring the situation.
Well, whatever, yeah, keep it simple. Okay, good. So are we ready to move on then? I don't want to cut anyone off. I'm looking at the screen. I think it's, okay, okay, great. So the next section is all Jessica. It's the director's report.
Oh, I don't know. That one, that was a fun conversation.
Yeah, it was great.
Well, I have a couple of things to share with you all tonight. The first is, actually, the last on my topic list, but just because you've all seen his face here. I want to introduce you to our new.
Oh, I just said yay.
Okay, yay. I want to introduce you to our new deputy director, Kevin Osborne. So Kevin, do you want to say a little something about yourself, since you're unmuted?
Sure. Hey, everybody. So I've met Fran, and you guys have seen me at meetings and stuff. I'm, I'm in the middle of week four, and as Jessica keeps saying, I keep coming back. So I'm trapped, and I like it. So I'm out there, I'm in your districts, doing the visits, going to your branches. If you ever want to reach out to me about anything, I am here. I spent the last three years in Charlottesville, but prior to that, I was a Fairfax County resident for a full decade. So I know the turf pretty well, so I'm like an insider outsider.
Yes, and he's, he's.
Welcome back.
Yes, he's settling in well already, and I can tell he's going to fit in well because he's already recommending restaurants to me that are Fairfax County institutions. I'm like, oh, yeah, this is good pick, good hire. So Kevin, Kevin and I are going to maintain a pretty similar process to what Christine, the prayer deputy, and I had, where the deputy position oversees many of our internal services functions, including our branch coordinators that oversee all of our branch libraries, technical operations, library IT, our administrative service functions, and our marketing department. So he's getting settled in. So he's getting settled in, getting to know people and um, I think we're gonna, we're gonna have a real fun time here in 2022 and beyond. So please do reach out if you wanna say hello and um, think good thoughts as they look for permits, home location here in Fairfax County.
Good luck.
Yeah, seriously. Um, so that, that's our welcome for Kevin. The other two items that I had documented in your report, the first was an update about Canopy. I'm thrilled to share that we have assigned agreements and that Canopy is now live. Canopy is our first full, fully fledged video streaming service. And you can find it if you go to fairfaxlibrary.canopy.com. It's very easy to sign up. You just have to set up a real quick profile. I, I think it took me maybe a minute to do. And we are able to use this um, through grant funding from the American Rescue Plan Act that's supported through the Library of Virginia. So extra, extra thanks to our friends at the state for ensuring that we got some funding to offer additional digital services as people continue to remain socially distanced and and entertain and recreate and educate themselves from home. Uh, Canopy is really fascinating. It's not exactly like some of the streaming services you might purchase for yourself. It's not like Hulu or Netflix where it's um, entirely popular TV shows or things that are on air right now. Canopy has some really amazing collections. So the Criterion Collection is in there, great courses. There were some awesome travel and cooking shows. And all of us as users of the Fairfax Library System get five credits a month. So you can check out five movies or five seasons of a show, uh, and then it resets every month on the first of the month. That does not include great courses and it does not include kids' shows. Those are all unlimited usage for however much you need. Suzanne, you had a question?
Yeah, is that um, five per cardholder or per household?
Cardholder.
So if you got ten people in your household, you can watch all the time.
They have to each set up an account with their library card number, but that is correct. As far as I am aware, that is correct. I have only signed up one card on my house so far. Uh, the first, if anyone is interested, the first movie I am watching is called Cat Nation. It is uh, about these islands and communities in Japan's where cats are more prolific than people and how they've turned into tourist destinations. If anyone else wants to. Uh, Liz, you have your hand up.
We, yeah, you said you got funding for this from, I think, the state under uh, the um, the COVID program. How long do we have this ability to offer this to our patrons?
Our grant funding runs through September 30th, although there may be extension opportunities depending on it took us a while to get this contract into place. So we're, we're keeping an eye on that. But our goal was to have this in place for a year to assess community interest and to to go from there. We're really, you know, we're really hoping that interest will be high enough that we can leverage this into additional county dollars to support it ongoing. But of course, that is always an uphill battle. Um, part of the reason that there's a limit on how much you can watch every month is because of the financial cap that we've put on this. We um, our lovely partners in technical operations and collection development, her for a long time, looked at various streaming options and have found them much too expensive. For example, we had looked at Hoopla, which is like a library version of Hulu where it's got, you know, current popular TV episodes. And if we had let that run for as much as we anticipated people would use it without limits, it would cost us like a million dollars a year, which is not feasible for us. So this is a good way to test the waters and see how it goes. But for now, we're looking at about a year.
Or is it a very expensive, you said a million dollars for the other one for a year or this, uh, for the one that we're getting, how about, about how much is that?
For the one that we're getting, I think it's about eighty thousand, but that is again, because we put caps on it. Yeah. And and don't quote me on eighty, it's close-ish to there.
But is that something that, is that something that if the foundation was looking at uh, having a new program, that if this is successful, that maybe they could pick up the cost if we can't get it elsewhere?
Um, I'm sure that we could ask them about opportunities, but that's a pretty big new programmatic ask to to tag on to the work that they already do. So I, we don't mind sharing it with them, but for now, I think we would, we would certainly like to see if there's opportunities to extend the grant funding beyond the September 30th deadline that we have right now. And after that, if we can use it to leverage additional county dollars.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. So I hope you all have an opportunity to go out and try it. You don't have to watch cat videos. There's lots of other good things in there too. There was a wonderful, I also have in my list, there's a great travel collection about um, national parks in the US. And the first one is about the um, Niagara Falls, about it being the first, one of the first national parks and how it was developed over time. So take a look around, see what you can find. Um, in addition to that, the other documented item here is about our hours modifications. You all already know this, but we started our new temporary hours change in mid-January. And it's anticipated to go through that first weekend in April, right before spring break starts for FCPS. I know that I have gotten many questions and concerns about this from members of our public, and I know that our branch colleagues have as well. And you all may have in your roles as trustees. So just to reiterate, uh, this is not something that we wanted to do. It is not a sneaky way to not appropriately use taxpayer dollars. Uh, this was simply a reality that we had to face, that between the high number of vacancies that we have right now and the COVID surge that we were in at the beginning and mid-part of January, we simply didn't have enough bodies to operate our libraries at six and seven day a week schedules. That just was, it was becoming untenable. And our options were pretty limited. We could look at shortening the days or shifts that we were open to the public. Or we could look at potentially closing branches short term. And I, I, I hope that we could all agree that closing branches in any one Magisterial District is a pretty rough political option to try and get people on board with. So this was the most fair way that we could find to ensure that it was easy to remember hours change for the public. It was short term enough that we would hopefully be able to get past this current COVID hump um, and hire some more folks. And that we will be back to normal schedule by the time our buddies in the school system are in spring break and kiddos are gonna flow into our branches. So I have chosen to interpret the many uh, angsty phone calls and emails that we have received as people loving library services so deeply and loudly that they need to tell you it's in very firm tones. Uh, that people would not be that upset about this if they didn't love their libraries deeply and they weren't actually upset about the fact that our service hours didn't meet their needs anymore. And you know, we can, we can all deal with that kind of extra vocal love for a little bit uh, until we get back to our normal service hours. So we continue at the library to continue to aggressively uh, promote our our vacancies. Um, we've also gotten questions about if somebody goes onto the county's website at any moment in time, it might not appear like the library has that many recruitments posted. And just a couple of hints, if you get questions or if you yourselves are wondering. Uh, we post positions both open to the general public and promotional for internal staff. So there are two areas you have to look on the county site to see all of the available jobs. Uh, and those are based on if we think we'll have strong internal candidate pools or if it makes sense to do it open to the general public. And in addition, when those jobs are posted, there might be one class specification like library aid that is posted and that one job posting might have multiple positions that we're recruiting for. Library aid is a great example. We have recently run both full-time and part-time library aid recruitments. The full-time recruitment was for six full-time positions. The part-time one was for eleven part-time positions. So those two postings are actually for seventeen jobs. Um, another factor for for the public just to be aware of is there are lots and lots of steps to the recruitment process. So even if something is not currently posted that they can see and apply for, it's still somewhere in the queue. So I had checked right before I wrote the director's report and we had upwards of forty vacancies that we were somewhere in the queue with. It was either currently open for applications. It had closed and the Department of County Human Resources was reviewing those applications. We were putting together a panel and selecting candidates from the referred lists or inactive interviews. Interviews have closed and we're checking top candidates references, or we have extended an offer to someone and we're just waiting for them to start. Um, like every other government agency and any business anywhere at this point in time, we are going through the same hiring challenges that many people are with limited pools of candidates and people who have many, many, many options as they are um, assessing where they wanna move next in their career. And so we've had some disappointing recruitments where we, we haven't had as many people apply as we would have liked. We've had to rerun a number of recruitments uh, due to people either declining positions when offered or we, we haven't actually been able to find people for positions. But we remain optimistic and we will only fill those positions with people who will love our library system and want to be here and be excellent stewards of public services. So when we hit April 2nd and we move back to those new hours that started back in July of last year, we may not have actually filled too many of the vacant positions, but we will, everybody fingers crossed, have been past the current COVID surge. And that will definitely help us as we, we go back to those six and seven day a week schedules. Any, any questions about the hours modifications?
I, I stopped, when I stopped in at George and at Woodrow and I asked staff um, how it was going and um, if they'd gotten complaints and they said, no, Woodrow was great.
Oh, good. Yeah, good. I am happy to hear that.
Yeah, cuz I was, you know, I just wondered how, you know, boots on the ground, how it was, how it was playing out.
Yeah, it was definitely the first two weeks were the ones where we got the most, you know, emails and voicemails and people stopping by with questions and concerns about it. At this point, you know, people have acclimated and they will, they'll transition back when we go back to the regular hours.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have a couple of other updates just to share before we move on. Um, the first is our Traveling While Black exhibit will be moving to the Sherwood Regional Library very soon. Um, it is finishing up its time with the McLean Community Center this week. And it will be moving to Sherwood early next week. So um, I think I sent you all the links so that you can register and several of you had indicated that you might wanna go as a group. So I'll be reaching out tomorrow to try and find a good time for everyone. We're very, very excited about the exhibit though. It's um, it's a good one. I, I hope you all have an opportunity to go and participate in the VR experience. We will be mimicking part of what the McLean Community Center is doing. So if you, you come and you participate in the experience, you have time afterwards for reflection. There will be um, postcards where you can document your, your thoughts and your feelings about how you're processing what you've learned throughout the um, throughout the virtual video and the the space that you're in. And we'll keep those posted so that people can reflect on what other people have felt as they've gone through it as well. So that's coming up. I also wanted to give an update on our Year of Literacy, like Priscilla mentioned earlier, it's, it's February now and so we are in Love Literacy Month, Valentine's Day is coming up. And we have a couple of really fun things going on. Many of our branches are participating in a blind date with a book program. So if you go to a local branch and you see a display and all of the books have been wrapped in, you know, like um, paper bags or tissue paper, something so that you can't see the cover. They'll have a brief description written on it. So you don't actually get to look at the cover of the book or read the inset. You just have to go off of, you know, the hundred and forty characters that are written on there and and see if that blind date will end up with a good book for you to take home that day. Um, in a, in addition, um, our wonderful central programming staff have put together an amazing poetry series. So it starts this month. And we've got um, a virtual event that is, I think it's the fifteenth, it's right after Valentine's Day and it's called Love Is. And it's about, it's a poetry writing workshop. And that will be kicking off a poetry writing contest in March, also called Love Is, uh, leading into Poetry Month, which is in April. Many different branches have got other events going on. So take a look at our um, news article that's about it. It's, it's on the library's website now. And you can always go to our event page and search by just the tag love literacy to see what's going on. One of the branches has a part-themed puzzle exchange going on right now. So just all kinds of sweet, nice little things for Love Literacy Month. And as a cue up for next month, it will be sports literacy, sports fans unite. I'm, I'm not gonna try and give a highlight on that one cuz I'm gonna need more preparatory work on Sports Lingo. Um, the last update I wanted to share was about the hybrid setup that we've been working on for the George Mason Library. Um, you all gave us some wonderful feedback about some of the challenges that we were seeing with that virtual hybrid setup at the George Mason Library so that we could have both in-person board meetings and virtual participants. And we heard loud and clear that um, the audibility was not great with the virtual setup for those folks that were participating from home, that the sharing of the mics didn't work out really well. And so we went back to the vendor for this and we're trying to figure out how much it would cost to get a permit set up and if we needed any modifications. It is more pricey than we were anticipating. Much more pricey than we were anticipating. So we have transitioned, we pivoted slightly and instead we're looking to see if any of the other county spaces that already have the video text set up in place and tested uh, would be able to support the library board for future meetings. Um, they are in high demand as you might anticipate. So we are currently trying to duke it out for different time slots for you all. I don't have a great answer yet, but just wanted to let you know that the, the setup at the George Mason Library is very unlikely now based on the configuration of that room and the incredibly high cost to do it. Uh, but we are, we are going to find a way to make it work so that when you go back to in-person meetings at some point, there will be a capacity for people who need or want to participate virtually per your um, electronic meeting guidelines to be able to do so. So we're working on it. No good answer yet. There's your update. Those are all the things I wanted to share, Fran.
Right. Thank you so much. Now we move on to new business and um, the, uh, did anyone have a?
Yeah, I, I had a question. First, I wanna apologize. My uh, I had a power outage and it kicked me off altogether. So I missed some of your talk, just a little bit, and then I was able to get it back on again. Did you happen to mention the uh, book storage for friends donation? If not, okay, do you, you have any news on that or not? No?
Not a mucho.
No problem. That's okay.
Okay, that's anybody else? No, okay, good. So um, I'm, I'm gonna talk a little, I attended the um, the Midwinter LibLearn X um, and I, I mentioned a little bit about it before. It was um, it was really, really good. Um, one of the, there were a lot of highlights, but one of them was Weston Woods, which does movies. And um, you could preview um, some of the kids' movie. One was UBU, which was really, really sweet. And then one was um, The Sun is a Pretty Big Deal. And and I checked out the picture book after I saw the movie and my brother, my oldest brother is a physicist and he used to teach astronomy at uh, GW. And I'm like, I gotta get this for him because he's now eighty-something. And I think it would just be a kick, like here's the sun and they have little, it's, if you wanna see a really fun uh, nonfiction book, just go ahead and reserve it. Um, it, it's really great. And the movie is even better. So I hope that we, I don't know if we buy children's movies and have movie programs, which we should. Okay, so then um, I attended a lot of programs. The one I'm gonna share with you is called um, Curating for Inclusion. Redefining the Public in Academic and Municipal Libraries. And um, it, it had some really interesting stuff. Um, discussions of partnerships between academic and public libraries. And um, mostly I, when I look back at my notes, mostly I had concentrated on um, Boston and Cambridge uh, and their municipal libraries and what they were doing. So um, they talked a lot about library access during the pandemic and inclusive design and how is public discourse enhanced? So they defined libraries as democratizing institutions which um, leveled the playing field for all. And so once again, the Year of Literacy, information literacy was a big deal. Um, to be able to read all points of view without interference, books that exhibit, bring up or discuss ideas that might make people uncomfortable. And so that's what, you know, there's a lot of fuss about that. Um, so how is public discourse enhanced? In Cambridge, um, they um, consider themselves a place where issues can be addressed and discussed in a community hub to just, to explore our democracy. And they shared this great quote from a library patron who said, I feel the most democratic when I use my library card. It's like, oh. Um, and the other idea um, from Boston, that there's no entry test to gain entry into a public library. Um, you know, the whole access and no barriers. I love that. There's no test, you can just come in. Uh, then the role of access in terms of the role, the library's role to serve everyone and to make an effort to remove barriers and provide equitable service. And that just um, you know, melds right into what, what uh, we've been focusing on also. Um, free, free to all and free means free. So the immaterial costs, issues of cost and availability create an obstacle in all libraries. And I think that uh, I hadn't thought of it that way. I had been sort of narrow in my definition of this issue um, with ebooks. But when I, when I heard that and I thought about that, I thought that, that's a really important thing um, for us to think about, or maybe everybody has realized that right away. Um, so it's the question of who connects, have. Or maybe everybody has realized that right away. Um, so it's the question of who connects, have access to materials and that's really critical. And um, so along with that, with the pandemic issues and uh becoming more aware of the digital equity issue. Um, it's, um, it's, you know, a lot of the things that they did are things that we also did. I think they were kind of creating hybrid experiences and dealing with the digital gap issue. Um, at Boston Public, they had really great slides of, they had like their service furniture on wheels. So the checkout desk, you know, or, or the info desk, you know, it was a great big desk, but you know how they have with wheels that you can lock and then you can unlock them and you can move them out of the way. And, and I, I don't know that we've ever done anything like that, but I thought that was really cool because you could really um, you know, move them out of the way, move them anywhere. Like, okay, there's a big program here. Let's go over there and check out all the books right there. I mean, it would be really, it was cool. They also had a reading garden, which I thought was great. And they had a room for early voting. Um, we do that at some places and a testing site. They also brought up the issue that just as students um have experienced learning loss during the, the pandemic, so has staff development been affected? So that's something that I, I hadn't thought about in terms of um staff and I should have since I was a training coordinator for the library system. I thought of that right away. Um, and once again, Cambridge branch hired a social worker to help with vulnerable patrons, which is something that we've been but wanting in our budget also. Um, and just like uh FCPA, Boston Public expanded their hotspot technology. They loaned Chromebooks, expanded wifi externally and in cafe spaces for users. And so one of the things they showed with these um movable furniture is like there was a little cafe right there um next to the checkout area and they could move these things all around. It's cool. So I think Priscilla also went to LibLearn X, right, Priscilla? Or attended?
I, I did. I did. I'll just share one that, that might be of interest to people here. I know we've talked before about our collections and um the, the ways that we can use tools to evaluate our collections and how they are balanced in their makeup. So um, I took some notes from a session called Practical Tools for Implementing Collection Diversity Audit. And it was um, the, the best part of it was they uploaded tons of files. So they already had a lot of the structures that someone who attended could just download, alter and use. So I thought that was great. I think the main insight was that they took this beyond what you normally think of. Um, I think necessarily around evaluating a collection, who's really a diversity audit of all your programming and um focusing on not just what's on your shelves, but what you're selecting to put on your shelves. And um, thinking about the idea that a diversity audit, the way that I've seen it and we've tried it before is really about sampling and, and kind of a one-shot profile. And then you kind of move on from that and, and although um it's, it's virtually impossible to do a book by book by book audit um just for the time and volume, that the sampling planning can be continuous and ongoing. And that gives you um a more accurate and authentic profile to continue working with. And over time, you should be able to document the changes that you um see. So I, I was, it was um focused on the public library. I found a lot that I can do um and applied to the way we are in FCPS libraries and I just appreciated the opportunity to have, there was a lively chat session uh, uh side conversation going on along with the presentation and the presenters were amazing. So I'll share that one.
I also enjoyed the, the last day when they announced the winners in all the different categories. And I now have a huge tote bag full of um books that I reserved and, and I'm reading the Newberry book, the last um. Uh, I forget the exact title of it. It's cuz it's part Spanish and it's, but it's really good. So um, we're now ready for round table. So rather than try to figure out who's next in the lineup, I thought I'd just go through the roll call again, if that's okay with everyone, which means that Brian is first.
I have nothing except uh welcome to Kevin. I welcomed him, you know, electronically, but now by voice.
Thank you. And Sue is next.
Um, nothing to say.
Okay, thanks Sue. And Jane?
Hello, Kevin. Welcome and pass.
Okay, uh Suzanne, leave me.
Uh, nothing new to say. Welcome, Kevin.
SuJatha, you're up. Roundtable. You're muted.
I also, I have nothing to say.
Talked it out. All right. Um, Sheila, come on.
Welcome, Kevin. Nothing to say.
I, I may have to talk some more then. Okay, no, Keith.
Keith.
I have something to say.
Okay, save them from me.
But, but very brief cuz uh I noticed the time. Um, first of all, uh many of you probably know I was raised in Boston and I went to high school in Cambridge. So I love, I, I felt what you were saying, Fran. Um, uh, the second thing I wanted to mention is about this um virtual reality green book. Um, and, and I just want to share a personal story. Uh, my mother-in-law often talks about her family's drive from Kansas to Connecticut and literally had to go a certain path to make it to Connecticut. That's my mother-in-law. She's still alive. She's seventy-two, seventy-three. So I, I, you know, when we think about these things sometimes and it's like, it's way over there somewhere. But uh it's very personal. I can't wait to experience it. Part of me doesn't even want to, but I'm gonna experience it and enjoy it. And the last thing I'll say is um, um, the uh budget committee is gonna meet uh either this week or next week. Uh, we're expecting uh a draft budget from the county executive uh within a week or two. So um, that's all I got. Uh, last time we met was in October, the committee, so we'll be meeting soon. Thank you.
You and um Gary?
Nothing.
And um Priscilla?
Welcome to Kevin, of course, and um taking a look at that Mythbusters. I love that article. The tone is just chef's kiss. It's perfect and gives all the right information. It makes it personal to FCPS too. And I wanted to give a enthusiastic shout out to Shyla from the Reston Branch. And I wish that she had shared her last name, but it was awkward because it was a virtual setting. Um, but I did virtual knitting on the weekend and it was amazing. And the reason I really want to shout out um Shyla was she was masterful in weaving in promotion for the library while we're all talking about our knits and pearls and our patterns and our yarn and all of that. And as a result, I now know that I can get Inner Weave Knits Magazine always available. And literally that morning, I had bought a pattern that I could have gotten for free if I had only realized that that was available. So I just wanted to give that recognition. I confessed at the very end that I was a librarian myself. I did not tell her I was a member of the board cuz that felt kind of weird. But um I just wanted to say it was fantastic and I'm um getting, I'm looking forward to um doing February's meeting as well.
I didn't even know they did that, Priscilla. Virtual meeting via the library. I did not know they did that.
There, there are a lot of programs that I wish I could do. Um, and um they are usually during the school day or early afternoon in the week and I can't do it. This was two o'clock on a Saturday. Uh, so it was perfect. So anyway, I highly recommend it and I, and um she was a wonderful facilitator, just so enthusiastic and knowledgeable.
The, the staff member that you're mentioning won a Staff Excellence Award last year from library board. It's um Shala Vedula. She used to work at Oakland.
Well, she deserves it. And um I love the baby blanket she was working on. And I also told her how great to your job lets you just knit and gab about knitting. That was awesome.
All right, thank you. Um, Liz?
Oh, that was a great story. Do they do crocheting? I have a friend who crochets. She might be interested in joining. Okay, um, just as a side note uh with what Keith was saying, uh when I was in high school, I lived in a dormitory that uh uh was shared with the embassy children that um were in my community. And I had two best friends who were twins, who were black. And they told me about uh when they were younger, driving through the south and using, the family using the green book to have safe passage. And here is uh their father was like a very high-level diplomat um in an embassy overseas. And it was just painful for me to hear their stories about how this country um had sections where uh citizens could not travel freely and safely. And it was just a, an eye-opener for me. And I was about sixteen at that time and I carried it with me for the rest of my life. But um, the second thing is I had the opportunity uh H Mart in Chantilly uh bought seventy-nine or so books. Um, uh, because this author, an Asian-American author said crying in H Mart. So they bought the book and it turns out um it's very popular uh by Michelle Zoner. I don't know how to pronounce her name, but they dropped off seventy-nine or so, maybe eighty books at the uh Sully Government Center and they didn't know what to do with it. So they said, Liz, can you do something with these? Since you're on the library board, so uh we were grateful that Jessica uh took ownership of fifty of them. Uh, because there was a waitlist of over five hundred people in the county looking for this book. Uh, so it was very handy. And then I've been uh looking online and distributing through the little library communities that are around um the rest of the neighborhoods. And that's what started it because at Sully Government Center, there's a little library, uh community library inside at the lobby and the people knew that. So that's why they got these books. But anyway, so if you happen to know where, I have about ten books left and um to distribute. So if you happen to know where there is a community library in your neighborhood, I would appreciate hearing that address because uh I had picked out some, but when we went to look uh to drop them off, they weren't there where they were supposed to be. So uh I am still looking. I know that the George Mason Library has one. I'm gonna drop them off on Saturday when I uh, I'm in that, sort of in that area. I'll make a special trip, but if you know of any.
I think Suzanne has her hand up.
Yes, the Mosby Woods Pool in my neighborhood has a little free library. And Maggie Belson, who's a member of the Friends of the Fairfax City Library, has a little free library in her front yard.
Okay, I'll call.
You sent two copies to Fairfax. I'll deliver them.
Where in Fairfax City Library?
Yeah, just put my name on them. It said, said, okay, Jessica. Send them over to Fairfax City with my name on them and I'll put, I'll give one to Maggie and I'll put one in our.
You only want two?
Yeah, that's fine.
I will do that. I will let you know when I've done it.
So there's one, there's a little one a few blocks from our house. It's, it's, you know, is that what you mean? Like, cuz I, you could send that to George for me and I'll pick it up and put it, I'll read it first. I'll admit it. And then I'll, and then I'll take it.
Right. Looks like Sheila has her hand up.
You could, you could send about three over to um Reston Regional. I, we've got one at the corner of our street, one in the woods and one in another friend. So I've got three at least.
So do I put it to your attention, Sheila, or what do I do?
Just put it in, 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 send it to Reston. Yeah.
Reston. And uh Fran, you said George.
Yeah, I do with my name on it and film.
All of you know when I've done that, so you know to go. And I've got you Suzanne, so.
Okay, give me three. I just thought of one more.
Okay, that's great. So it was a donation and the foundation got ten books. Um, so this is great. I think you're gonna be able to get rid of all of my seventy-nine copies that they were donated. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Thanks, Liz. Um, Phil, any roundtable news?
Call on me, Fran?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Kevin, I'm gonna second the welcome for you. I'm, I, I do a lot of seconds, so I'm gonna do that for you. We're glad you're on the board and and I look forward to having the opportunity to meet you sometime. And I just would, would like to wish everybody a good rest of the week and a good month and maybe we'll get warmer weather.
We have it.
That's right. Okay. Oh, now it's me. Um, so let's see, what can I talk about? No. Welcome, Kevin. It was great to meet you and it's great to have you here. And um, I think we're ready to entertain and a, a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Okay. All those in favor?
Bye.
Anyone opposed wants to keep meeting? No. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Night, everyone.
Good night. Thank you.